Except for seventy dollars that is twelve.
Okay, we will call our September twenty ninth council meeting order and zombie for pledge, W will play tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we come before you tonight grateful that we're able to live in this city and grateful that we're able to gather on behalf of the residents of Napany. Lord, help us to just keep that in mind as we make decisions on behalf of the city tonight. And we just thank you for this opportunity to serve you in this capacity. Just be with us as we connect the business of the city and just thank you again for today, Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right. We have everybody here but Dustin, Dustin, he would not be here this evening. So we have four. We have a forum, so we'll go ahead and move forward with the approval of the minutes from September fifteenth. We have a motion. Motion in a second. Any questions, corrections or comments? Hearing now, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Petitions and comments by citizens. We will have a public hearing here in a minute under unfinished business on ordinance sixteen forty five, but I think I know why everyone else is here. So we will go ahead and move on to reports of committees, boards and commissions. Clerk Treasurers report, Jeff.
Yeah, this won't take a whole lot of explanation. You'll see about a two million dollar change in that top line. I told Crystal I was gonna focus. If you could just go up to the top for just one second to the top page. You'll see between the beginning and the end of the month, there's about a two million dollar difference there, not if you scroll up. It really didn't come out of the general fund. What it is is you can't, you have to remember that we have these bond funds down here at the bottom of this table that shows all the funds that we have in a depository relationship with Bank of Oklahoma who's managing those funds for us. So what has happened is a million three from that equity contribution account. That is a million three lower than it was the month before. And if you scroll up a few lines, there's a debt service was paid out of the RDA sinking fund. So there was a debt service payment of about two hundred and forty-four thousand out of that. So between the two, you get to about about a million between a million five and a million six. So that's where the large majority of the change came from. It wasn't that the general fund took a big hit. It was that, it was that Don's fire station bills came in and we, and we paid wagon for the construction progress that they had made. So those, that number is gonna get lower as we get closer to early mid-October. We'll get another couple of, I think the one that's not showing up here is a nine hundred thousand dollar payout that, that came into this month. So this is as of the month end. So we've had nine hundred thousand dollars come in beyond that. So that's what those funds are used for. So it's not impacting the general, but overall we're still in really good shape. The, the interesting thing was last, was last week. Or whenever the Fed melt last, it dropped a quarter point. Everything I'm listening to on either Bloomberg or CNBC right now is talking about two more pick or rate cuts before the end of the year. So another fifty basis points probably. So we refinanced those CDs at the right time. So anyway, I'll open it up for questions.
Counsel, any questions on clerk treasurer's report?
I'm gonna, I guess I anxiously await the sign outside that says Don's Fire Station.
All right. Any other questions? If not, do we have a motion?
I have a motion to approve the clerk treasurer's report for August thirty first of two thousand twenty-five is presented.
Second that motion.
Motion in a second. Any remaining questions? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. Stay in the, stay in the call. All right, Jeff, Jeff appreciates that. All right, so unfinished business. We have second reading of ordinance sixteen forty-five. Before we do that, we do have a public hearing requirement that we need to meet. That public hearing was listed in Gateway. It is listed for nine twenty-nine at seven P M. And, and the adoption meeting will happen on ten thirteen, twenty twenty-five at seven P M. So it is duly noted of the public hearing. So at this time, I will open the public hearing on ordinance sixteen forty-five. The city budget for twenty twenty-six. If there are any comments by public or against, now's the time to make comments. Ample time. Okay, hearing now, we will close the public. Statutorily, we are in compliance and we will move on to your second reading of ordinance sixteen forty-five. Crystal, if you can go to the second page of that, or third page, I'm sorry. With Baker Tilly, basically, we presented this revenue summary to you. Basically, the top half of the sheet was presented when we went through the budget on first reading. But they've kind of added some information here. Senate enrolled act one reductions, you'll see in there as negative numbers. Which is basically additional circuit breaker credits that are being taken out due to the new legislation. So we are seeing impacts of Senate enrolled act one. Doesn't impact the numbers you saw last, last week. The general fund clear on the left. We have seven million eight hundred three thousand eight hundred seventy-one dollars projected in operating receipts or revenue. A lot of the additional reductions were made up by revenue that we're generating either by fees or by or services. Also, our interest rates have been pretty good. So that's that's included in there as well. So so that's the revenue, but they put in what we had in for the first reading for the budget, plug those numbers into the general fund. The second column there is the streets. Third column is LRS, fourth column is parks. Fifth column's aviation, public safety. So if you scroll down to the bottom, Crystal, you'll see the projected ending fund balance and you'll see the percentage of reserves at the end of twenty twenty-six based on, based on the budget. So again, just to give you guys an idea, and then estimated tax rates are listed there below. If you go down to the next sheet, Crystal, it has all the other essential funds of the city, not everything, but most of the, most of the funds. You can scroll down to the bottom there. We're looking at an estimated tax rate of one point four five eight three. That is subject to the final determination of our net assessed valuation. Elkhart County has not released that yet. So again, that's why these are estimates. And so if that assessment comes in higher, that rate will drop. If they come in lower, it might be a little higher than that. So but that's what we rely on Baker Tilly for, putting those numbers together. Any questions on this information? I think this is a good kind of summary to kind of see where we're at, where the budget matches up with projected receipts and dispersments.
This is crystal ball stuff, but do you have any ballpark idea when those figures might be released? Like I said, crystal ball.
I, I don't, I didn't, I did not hear. I, I don't know what the deadline is. I mean, I'm sure there's a deadline with the L G F, but I'm not sure when that is, if it's passed or if they're running into some some issues at the county level, but. Kaziasko is in.
But Elkhart wasn't in when they were trying to put this together.
So as soon as we get that, we can maybe take a look at updating it, but, but for now, that's their best guess.
And you had said last year it was their, their estimate was pretty, pretty close, but that would include the, the Elkhart.
So. Okay, any questions on this? Okay, Crystal, if you can go to the next slide. And this, Jeff, I will let you kind of touch base on this.
After we presented the, the budget to you last time, we started working with Baker Tilly to fill out the forms that go into Gateway. And they, they suggested move, just moving some things around. So that, that's what I'm telling you is happening here. So where we had the, the bond debt service. It was in Board of Works on, on the page that had, it was one of the lower lines that had debt service in there. And it also included two and a half million dollars for the geo bond that we had. What Baker Tilly suggested is take those out of the board works because they're gonna be their own separate line item in the gateway system that we put. So we moved those two numbers to the miscellaneous budget sheet, and I'll show you that in a second here. But they also suggested using instead of two and a half million, we had two point four million on our fund report as of six thirty, and that's the number they used saying, well, it's not gonna be higher than two point four three. So let's just use that number instead of around at two five. So four point, four hundred and sixteen thousand has been moved from World Works to the miscellaneous page, as has the two million four hundred and thirty-six thousand, that's moved as well. Then the next section down is each year we have C C M G projects that we, we do account for them and a hundred and seventy-four thousand appears in N V H restricted and another fifty thousand was accounted for in TIF for the project help that they give us. But we haven't usually included the, the overarching total from C C M G because it's usually a, a negative on our fund report, but we always get money in from them. So it's, it's kind of a wash. Well, what they were suggesting doing is show the whole amount of C C M G. That way you don't have to worry about negatives and you don't have to explain it to anybody. And that would include it. You, you kind of take care of some of the state board of accounts questions that might come in. So we had included that number. And it's not really in addition to the budget. It's just a matter of we were gonna get the money and it was gonna pass through anyway. So that's, it's really no add there. If you'll scroll up one more page. The final thing is that we had the fire station bonds balance as of six thirty was four point two million. And what they said is you're not going to use all of this fund between now and the end of the project, but you're probably gonna want to use some of it for expenditures that carry forward a little bit that haven't been wrapped up by now. And if you use some of the funds for the fire truck, you're gonna want to use that in the next year too. So by doing this, including that four point two million in there. It, we're not saying we're gonna use four point two million next year, but whatever's remaining, we will be able to use next year because we will have budgeted for it this year. So there are funds that are already on hand in, in a bond form that we're just going to use next year. So all of those items, if you could go to, I think it's the next, the next page. Or the next. Yeah. Can you scroll all the way up for me? And yeah. So right there, right there is where I want to go. So this is how they appear on their reconciliation sheet. So it looks like they're negative numbers over there because I didn't have them on mine, but they were just suggesting changes. So what I would like to do is go to the budget sheets that I put out there that reflect. Are those up next? Yeah, so. If this is, so this is board of work. So on the original PDF that you have, if you could scroll up. Keep going, going right there. So right now, this is on those original sheets you had. You had four hundred thousand plus that was here allocated for the, for the bond debt. And you had the two and a half million for the bot, the geo bond was here. If you scroll up to the next page. So then this is the miscellaneous sheet. And if you just keep, keep scrolling, here's where all of those numbers appeared. Oh, that we moved. One hundred sixteen, two point four. This is the full C C M G and that's the, that's the remaining of the bond. So we've accounted for it here. So we're just moving numbers around a little bit. These are the two numbers we moved. And these are the two numbers we added just to account for funds that we already had on hand or that we were gonna be getting and passing through. And if you go to the, the final page there. It's just the summary of where we stand and you'll see that it has changed. The board of works number has changed, the miscellaneous number, but overall from a, from a general fund standpoint, it had no negative impact to us. And these are out there for you to go print out if you wanted to replace your pages.
Yeah, so it really has more to do with accounting to the state board of accounts than any numbers in here. So the number, overall numbers didn't change. It was just a matter of we had it in board of works. They said move them to miscellaneous because they, they need to be in their own, their own category. So that's a lot of information.
And I'd be more than happy to answer questions you have regarding that to the best of my ability, but it, it.
Questions?
No, I was just like the, obviously it, it seems more just like accounting than any true, just like you said, shifting some of those things around. Like fire station, the, the bond there, it's not like that changes any payment structures, anything like that.
No, and, and you, you saw, we put in there four point two million. We already know if you look at that equity that we just looked at in the clerk treasurer's board is two point eight. And we'll probably spend a majority of that you know, before the end of the year.
It goes back to the realization that every budget we do is kind of an eighteen month budget. So you kind of go from June thirty, even though some of those numbers may be used already to the next point in time, which is twelve thirty-one of the following year.
And if you notice, a lot of those have to do with the bonds that we have and debt service payment. Community crossings matching grant is another grant. And so I think it does make it simpler for us to keep it in their own separate category so we can isolate those, isolate those costs. So. Yeah.
So when we get a bill, we can actually hit that line item for it and there's a balance in that line from an appropriation standpoint. It subtracts from the overall total versus a zero.
So from first to second reading, the dollar amounts did not, did not change. So didn't mean to throw a wrench in, but just want you guys to be, and be engaged in the process that we are, that we go through internally.
I, I would add, it, it changed not the general fund and not so, but it changed the total at the bottom because we added those things in to the, to the overall total, but it didn't impact the primary budget line items that we were doing. So.
Of the ordinance. Crystal, the next tab over.
Just the way that some of those things were placeholders and reflected in here is why those.
So I think on our summary page here, summary is gonna be.
Last page, Crystal, if you can. So in the miscellaneous budget worksheet. That's where it, that's where that number changed.
And in the final column, the final white column there, the number is twenty million three hundred. Because we added the, the four million in at the, at the C C M G, that number changed to twenty-five, but that's just because of those two numbers being added in for accounting purposes.
So any, any questions on that? If not, you guys spend some time to look at the budget since the first reading. Is there anything that jumped out to you guys or anything that you guys have questions on? On the budget? We go to specific pages.
As much as it, it pains me to say it this way, part of the discussion with some of the changes from Indy. As you've said, some of the bigger problem gears are coming down the pipeline. So I mean, the hope is some things get changed, that it eases the burden there. But part of my thinking is, okay, looking at this budget, how does it set us up in the future as part of some of those discussions and where where's, where is the big pain gonna be moving forward as part of this? I don't know. I don't want to get the card ahead of the horse by any means, but
Right.
You know, I, I'm kind of trying to think, okay, how are we preparing for the worst impact years?
Yeah. I mean, we're, we're trying to, to gather information. We don't want to over that. But we do want to be realistic and you know, if, if the projections are accurate. I think the biggest threat to us is our income tax in twenty twenty-eight. Hopefully, I've heard that there might be some consideration for making some changes that would benefit us in that area. But you know, if, if we're forced to make cuts, we're gonna have to make those cuts. I've said it before, we've cut, we've cut all of that out. If we cut more, it's gonna be cutting muscle out and it's gonna be, it's gonna be painful.
One of, one of the ways that I would answer this is we, we held the line and I think the budget is actually lower than you in the mixed. Not by huge amounts, but where you can start resting is if you can scroll up to the section that's got the CDs. Herein lies your next two years worth of potential issues. If something were to come up and we got in a pinch. Things didn't change as much as we do. We've got reserves that are built in here that give us access to liquidity that hopefully offsets any kind of detrimental impact that that has.
And I think I don't think many communities are in as good a position as we are with our debt, with our cash reserves
Yeah.
in, in the different departments.
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad we are having these conversations the way that we are now as opposed to some of the
Right.
communities that we know that it's, it's a tougher. There's a lot of tough conversations.
Yeah.
So I, I'm just trying to think, you know, planning ahead. Obviously, we didn't see this coming from Indy before the last year. So it's not like we were planning for this sort of thing last year. So I, I, I don't know, like I said, I don't want to get the card out of the horse, but I'm just kind of curious where.
And that's, that's kind of what we felt too. It's like, let's, let's, let's hold everything constant. Let's let's value our employees that we do have
Yeah.
right now and put that money where we can into raises for those employees. And let's see what happens next year. I think this session, we might get a little clearer idea of where the legislature is at.
I hope so.
I'm, I'm hopeful. But again, we'll, we'll know more in April of next year and where we'll be sitting.
You know, those, and it says a lot to the finances that we do have some of those fallback options. It's just you don't want that, you always want those fallback options to be there and not become a regular part of the discussion. And it's I'm, I'm glad where we're at today and hopefully there's some changes that
Yeah.
make this process a, a little bit
Less painful.
Sunnier in the future.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and it's unfortunate because it really, I said it before, it really hampers our ability to, to plan out in the future. You know, we can't plan for product, we can't plan for capital projects. We can't, can't really do a good job. We don't have consistent funding that we know is gonna be there. It really limits what we can, what we can do. So.
The only place we have real consistent funding is on the redevelopment side. And that becomes a partnership that really is gonna have to work well together over the course of the next two, three years in order to make sure that some of that development can take place. Some of the things they already have in the hopper from a redevelopment standpoint, but it's, that's where the, that's where the the engine's gonna come from, I think, from a development standpoint.
Anything else on the on the budget overall or anything specific you guys saw? Well, if, if there are no questions, do you want to have a motion? Second reading of ordinance sixteen forty-five.
Make a motion. We approve ordinance sixteen forty-five on second reading for the twenty twenty-six budget as presented.
Second. Motion in a second. Again, any further questions? I just want to thank Jeff and all the department heads and all of our staff for, for working with us on this budget. I think it's a, a workable budget. It's, it's within budget and like you said, that is it's, we don't know exactly what the future's gonna hold, but we're, we're hopeful some changes are being made that'll make it workable in the future.
When the mayor's always, I don't want to take, I want to make sure the mayor gets thanked as well because he, he put in as many hours as I did on this.
Okay, so on second reading, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, counsel. We will have final reading on October thirteenth. Next up, we have ordinance sixteen forty-six, the McCormick Creek Golf Course Clubhouse. This is pledging general revenues to the lease. Redevelopment Authority and Redevelopment Commission have agreed to terms in the lease rental. And this is just pledging the general revenues, which we expect to be revenues from the golf course specifically to pay for this project. So any questions on ordinance sixteen forty-six? The last step before closing on, on the bond. So if there are no questions, do we have a motion on second reading?
Sound moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and due to timing, I would ask that we consider suspending the rules to allow for third reading ordinance sixteen forty-six.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we do have four out of five. So. All right, so third reading of ordinance sixteen forty-six. Any questions before we take a motion? Not, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve on third reading, ordered sixteen forty-six.
Second.
Did you say second? Okay, all right. All right, any questions on this? If not, Jeff, if you'll take a roll call.
Ben?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Shelby?
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel, thank you very much. We'll keep you posted on progress on that. We have nothing under new business. So that brings us to approval of accounts payable vouchers.
This is another rather small register for you. It has one payroll in it. Two hundred and twenty-nine thousand of this is the renewal of our property and casualty insurance. There's about thirty-five thousand that is fire station related for equipment purchases and about twelve thousand for the work done on Cartoon Alley. And that gets you just about to the five hundred thousand.
Any questions?
Is that property and casualty annual or biannual?
It's annual. The payments usually take place around this time of year.
Last question, more comment, you mentioned the Cartoon Alley, that, that's a really cool addition for downtown that made it just in time for the festival, that was really cool, kudos to all the folks involved in that.
Yeah, that was a, that was a group effort, redevelopment commission, uh, Mark Collins and, and the planning department, um, the art council, um, the, the library helping with the research on that, um, Abbott Martin with the building department, um. It's just, yeah, community, community effort and, uh, something that we can be proud of, and I think, um, we've already got requests to do other alleys in different ways, but, um, that's, the redevelopment commission is focused on the downtown. Um, that's one, one way, uh, to continue that, they're going to continue to, to develop the downtown. And, uh, I think create a very positive environment for well in the future, so. Thanks to everyone who helped with that. Thank you, Ben. Any other comments or questions? If not, do we have a motion?
I would motion to approve A P Vs totaling five hundred and two thousand seven hundred three dollars and thirty eight cents as presented.
Okay.
Okay, motion in a second, any further questions? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Reports of city officers, one thing that I missed. I do want to mention that, uh, we did post an open door notice, uh, we will not have a meeting on October sixth next week. Our next meeting will be October thirteenth, which will be the final reading of the budget. Um, we hope to have the salary ordinance at that time as well. Um, and, um, and then there will be not, no meeting on October twentieth either, so we'll just have one meeting in October. Um, and then another item to note is October twelfth will be our open house at the fire station. Um, the public open house will be from three to six, and, um, you guys will be getting an invitation to that. We'll be getting those out this week, so October twelfth from three to six P M Sunday, and then we, uh, we'll be rolling fire trucks out of the ground October thirteenth. So. And if you want to see it beforehand, let me or Don know, we'll get you in to take a look at it.
I'm pleased going in tomorrow.
My husband just asked about that today.
So I told the, everyone at the board of works, um, the concrete has a specific strength that is required.
Right.
We have it tested to make sure it meets that strength, it did not meet the strength that we needed to, that's not on us, it's not on the contractor. It was the, the concrete, uh, company, uh, something happened in the mix that did not allow it to get to the desired strength. So they took out a good portion of the exterior concrete and, uh, are putting the last portion in tomorrow. So yes, not the, not the best look, but that, uh, it's not a cost to us, and it's not, uh, something that was anyone's fault, but the, the concrete comfort itself. Good question. All right, anything else?
Don's fire station will be ready. My, my wife asked, wait a second, are they, are they tearing apart part of the sledding hill as part of it?
So is it Gail's water palace?
It just gives you a heated place to go to watch people get a sled down the hill.
Okay, all right, anything else?
Steve, just a quick number for the, um, over Apple Festival weekend, which we call four days, we're just trying to see the amount of traffic that came into town, and from what we could see, it was fifty four thousand vehicles in four days.
Is that, that's total vehicles coming in and out? What is a average, you know, four day?
We checked it over the same like day period on a different weekend, and you're talking seven and eight thousand.
Oh, wow, yeah, so.
Can I ask like where you are when you're like doing your data?
No.
Like where people posted. So I'm like, how can you tell who's coming in and out? Like, how can you tell it's not somebody driving through?
They have Eve out there.
I know exactly. Stand in the Amish group as they count.
Yeah.
I'll ask you in five minutes.
We can, okay, all right, anything else? Did we have a motion?
Sound moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.